Excuse me, sorry. All right. Can I have a motion to certify closed session as presented in closed session?
Mr. Chair, I certify at the best, that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And thank you, Ms. Young. Was that Ms. Young? Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo. Oh, sorry. Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Sorry for that. I was anxious to get Ms. Ortigo in because she was a part of that meeting. Now, would you call the roll, Ms. Aller?
Yes. Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mrs. Hunley.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Here. All right. Can I have a motion to approve or allow Mrs. Ortigo to attend the meeting via electronic communication?
I move that we allow Mrs. Ortigo to attend this meeting via electronic communication.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. And thank you, Ms. Cook, for the second.
Second.
Mrs. Cook got it. But thank you, Dr. Beers. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I don't think there's any discussion. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Ms. Ortigo, are you muted?
I'm sorry. Yep, aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Item four point zero one into our organization of the board. So at this point where we move to the organization of the board, and I will pass the gavel to Dr. Heron, who will serve as our chair for the moment. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, the board must elect one of its members as chair. Mr. Kelly served as chair in calendar year 2021. May I have a motion to open the floor for nominations?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have nominations for chair of the school board to serve for calendar year 2022?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. Greg Dowell to serve as chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2022 calendar year.
Thank you. Mr. Dowell has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, may I have a motion to close nominations for chair?
So moved.
Ms. Aller, please take the vote to close nominations.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And I just want to say thank you to my board colleagues. No? Not yet?
Not yet.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me.
Nominations for the school board are closed, for chair of the school board are closed. The motion is to approve Mr. Dowell as chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2022 calendar year. Ms. Aller, please take the vote.
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo. Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dowell.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Dowell.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. But I'm going to start following the script like everybody else. Forgive me. I'm very grateful to this board for your confidence that you found in me and my ability to trust you, and hopefully we can work together and continue to move forward with Dr. Heron's planning, your staff to move us forward this year. Welcome, Ms. Hunley, and welcome, Ms. Ortigo, to the board, and really looking forward to working with each of you and watching you guys shine and bring your special talents to this division and representing your part of the James City County community, too. So thank you, guys, for your willingness to serve and for being here. With that, I want to move on to item four point zero two, appointment of the vice chair. May I have nominations for vice chair of the school board to serve for the calendar year 2022?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Kira Cook to serve as vice chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2022 calendar year.
Ms. Kira Cook has been nominated. Are there any further nominations?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I nominate Jim Beers to serve as vice chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2022's calendar year.
Mr. Jim Beers has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Any further nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations for vice chair?
So moved.
Ms. Aller, please take the vote to close nominations.
Mrs. Young.
Dr. Beers.
Can we?
This is the motion to close the nominations. Oh, I thought you already did that. Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Nominations for vice chair of the school board are closed. The motion is to approve, we have two nominations, to approve Ms. Cook for vice chair and to approve Dr. Beers for vice chair. And what I would like to do is to depart from the stated script for the moment, and I want to ask the board if we could look at these nominations differently, or the process to approving these nominations and electing a vice chair. What I'd like to do is ask if we could go through this cycle once, rather than approving with yays and nays for each nomination. And so what that would look like is Ms. Allar, Aller, excuse me, would call the roll, and when your name was called, you would signify your preference for a board vice chair by stating that nominee's last name. And if, that is, that is contrary to Robert's rules, I just wanted to state that, that it is contrary to Robert's rules. However, even embedded in Robert's rules, we can divert from Robert's rules if we agree to as a board. And so that's what I'm asking that we do. I think it'll be cleaner, and I think it'll bode well for this board. So if you would agree to that, if I can get you to kind of look at me and give me a thumbs up and a thumbs down if you don't agree to that. Okay. Dr. Beers, you haven't, okay, thank you, sir. And so that's what we'll do. And Ms. Aller will call the roll, and she'll also keep the tally. And after the roll's called, I will ask for the tally to be read.
Dr. Beers.
Dr. Beers.
Ms. Cook.
Ms. Cook.
Ms. Hummel.
Ms. Cook.
Mrs. Hunley.
Ms. Cook.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Dr. Beers.
Mrs. Young.
Dr. Beers.
Mr. Dowell.
Dr. Beers.
Your vice chair, that is, sorry, Mr. Chair, excuse me, that is four votes for Dr. Beers and three votes for Ms. Cook.
Dr. Beers, congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair. Ms. Cook, I thank you for your willingness to serve again as vice chair and to serve in a leadership capacity here. And I just want to state that I have learned so much from you, and I was pleased that you were willing to step forward as vice chair and help lead this division, and just really looking forward to you continuing to be a leader for the school division, too. So thank you, Ms. Cook. With that, we'll move on to item four point zero three, appointment of the parliamentarian. May I have nominations for a parliamentarian of the school board to serve the calendar year 2022?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate to serve as parliamentarian of the Williamsburg James City County School Board in the year 2022, Mrs. Julie Hummel.
Ms. Julie Hummel has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations for parliamentarian?
So moved.
Ms. Aller, please take the vote to close nominations.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo. Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Nominations for parliamentarian of the school board are closed. The motion is to approve Ms. Hummel as parliamentarian of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2022 calendar year. Please signify your support by saying aye. Ms. Aller, please take the vote.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hummel, for being willing to serve again as parliamentarian, for doing such a great job already. We'll move on to item four point zero four, appointment of the clerk and deputy clerk. In accordance with section twenty-two dot one dash seventy-six of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended that Ms. Beth Allar be appointed clerk and Ms. Starr Robinson be appointed deputy clerk of the Williamsburg James City County School Board through 2022. May I have a motion?
I move that the school board appoint Ms. Beth Allar as clerk and Ms. Starr Robinson as deputy clerk for the Williamsburg James City County School Board for calendar year 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. And Ms. Aller, please take the vote.
Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Aller. There are five. Appointment of the superintendent's designate. In accordance with section twenty-two dot one dash seven-six of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended that Mr. Daniel Kiefer, chief operating officer, be designated to attend meetings of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend through 2022. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board appoint Mr. Daniel Kiefer, chief operating officer, to serve as a superintendent's designate for the calendar year 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Aller, please take the vote.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item four point zero six, appointment of member to Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee. I have nominations for a member to serve on the Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Sarah Ortigo to serve on the Twenty-First Century Career and Ready Advisory Committee for the calendar year 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Ortigo has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Thank you. And Ms. Aller, please take the vote to close nominations.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers. Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Nominations are closed. The motion is to approve Ms. Ortigo to serve on the Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee for calendar year 2022. Please signify your support by saying aye. Ms. Aller, please take the vote.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Ortigo. Item four point zero seven, may I have nominations for a member to serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Kimberly Hunley to serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee for the calendar year 2022.
Ms. Kimberly Hunley has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Aller, could you take the vote, please?
Dr. Beers.
To close nominations, excuse me, to close nominations. Thank you.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Nominations are closed. The motion is to approve Ms. Kim Hunley to serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee for calendar year 2022. Please signify your support by saying aye. Ms. Aller, could you take that vote?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Hunley. I know you do well on that committee. Thank you. Four point zero eight, may I have nominations for two members to serve on the Student Advisory Committee?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Mrs. Hunley and Mrs. Ortigo to serve on the Student Advisory Committee for calendar year 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mrs. Hunley and Mrs. Ortigo have been nominated. Are there any further nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Aller, could you take the vote to close nominations?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Nominations are closed. The motion is to approve Ms. Hunley and Ms. Ortigo to serve on the Student Advisory Committee for calendar year 2022. Please signify your support by saying aye. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you. Item four point zero nine, appointment of two members to policy committee. May I have nominations for two members to serve on the policy committee?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Ms. Sandy Young and Ms. Julie Hummel to serve on the Policy Committee for calendar year 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Ortigo. Ms. Young and Ms. Hummel have been nominated. Are there any further nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Aller, can you take the vote to close nominations?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo. Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Nominations are closed. The motion is to approve Ms. Young and Ms. Hummel to serve on the Policy Committee for calendar year 2022. Please signify your support by saying aye, Ms. Aller.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just per sort of Robert's rules before taking a vote, I'd like to just offer some comments, if that's all right?
Thank you.
So I have served both with Mrs. Young and Ms. Hummel on the Policy Committee, and they are exceptional. And I absolutely support their service in this capacity, and I know they'll do an exceptionally good job. But structurally, I just want to comment that it has been the tradition of this board to have the vice chair serve on the Policy Committee, because that provides a link to the work of the Policy Committee to the agenda prep work with the superintendent and chair. This board has three primary responsibilities. The first is to hire and work with the superintendent. The second is to adopt a budget. The third is policy. So those are our three buckets of work. And our policies come through agendas, and so having that work and someone on that Policy Committee being in that agenda prep meeting to provide that important linkage, I think is a structurally sound thing to do. So that's not codified anywhere. It's just been our practice. So I just want to say that, again, I think Ms. Hummel and Ms. Young are amazing. I've served with both of them. They do a great job. I think they'll make a great team. But I'm concerned about that linkage not being there this year, and I think it may cause issues. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. I agree. Having served as vice chair last year, I see the benefit of serving on the Policy Committee and then being able to communicate certain aspects of the Policy Committee's work with the chair and Dr. Heron in the agenda prep. There are ways to bridge that gap if the vice chair is not on the Policy Committee. But I appreciate, Ms. Cook, you bringing this up. While it's not codified, I think that there's an opportunity for our Policy Committee to take a look at that as we review SOP later in the year and see if that's something that we do want to do, make as a mandate for our vice chair to serve on the Policy Committee. Are there any other thoughts around that before we continue? Okay. So, maybe I was hearing my voice. Nominations are closed. The motion is to approve Ms. Young and Ms. Hummel to serve on the Policy Committee for calendar year 2022. Please signify your support by saying aye, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Thank you both for serving on that committee. It's one that I really enjoyed being on, but I know it's in good hands. So thank you. Takes us to item four point one zero, four point one zero, appointment of two members to the school liaison committee. May I have nominations for two members to serve on the school liaison committee?
Mr. Chair, I nominate you, Mr. Dowell, and Ms. Cook to serve on the school liaison committee for the calendar year of 2022.
I and Ms. Cook have been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Motion to close nominations?
So, so move, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Historically, in the past, it has been the chair and the vice chair of the school board to be the two members on the school liaison committee, and I just would like to point that out and possibly have the Policy Committee look at that for the future. That's all.
That is certainly something that we could ask the Policy Committee to look at down the road when they do their work, looking at our standard operating procedure. Again, it's one of those traditional things that's not codified. But I do see.
It's not true, actually.
Okay.
I've been on the liaison committee the entire time of my board service, and I have not been chair of the vice chair.
Chair, if we go past and back before you were on the.
So for the last seven years, it hasn't been true?
I would just ask that you would direct your comments to the chair?
Anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Actually, the purpose of the, the purpose of the liaison committee is to provide a liaison communication between the three jurisdictions, the city, the county, and the school division. And so it's always been a city and a county representative, and that was the purpose of the existence of the committee to begin with. So I'm perfectly happy with the idea of codifying it, but I just want to make sure that the record is correct.
Dr. Beers, you had something. Go ahead.
I'd like the Policy Committee to look at that in the future.
That's certainly something we could ask them to do and to bring a recommendation to the board. I do, for one, see a benefit, and I've shared that with many people on this board. I see a benefit to a city member sitting on this board to be able to be in that liaison meeting and to, again, bridge that relationship between that funding partner and that counterpart in the city, as well as our county representatives on this board with our county counterparts. So, but we will, we will ask our Policy Committee to take a look at that when we get to that point. Okay, so I and Ms. Cook have been nominated. The motion's, motion to close nominations. I think, Dr. Beers, you said so moved.
Yeah.
Chair, that's me, as I'm reading this verbatim. Ms. Aller, will you take the vote to close nominations?
Yes, sir. Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell.
Nominations are closed. The motion is to approve myself and Ms. Cook to serve on the school liaison committee for calendar year 2022. Please signify your support by saying aye, Ms. Aller.
Dr. Beers.
I'd vote on both of them, like we can't separate.
Yes, sir.
That's another thing I think should go to the Policy Committee. Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you. Four point one one, appointment of school board member to serve as trustee on New Horizons Board. May I have nominations for a member to serve as trustee of the New Horizons Board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I nominate Ms. Young to serve as a trustee on the New Horizons Board for calendar year 2022.
Ms. Young has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
I think that was Ms. Hunley. Ms. Aller, can you take the vote to close nominations, please?
Ms. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Nominations are closed. The motion is to approve Ms. Young to serve as trustee on the New Horizons Board for calendar year 2022. Please signify your support by saying aye, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Young. I know you're really looking forward to being on that committee, and I know you'll represent the division well. Item four point one two, may I have nominations for a member to serve on the WHRO Board?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Dr. Beers to serve on the WHRO Board for the calendar year of 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Dr. Beers has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
And Ms. Aller, could you take the vote to close nominations?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Nominations are closed. The motion is to approve Dr. Beers to serve on the WHRO Board for calendar year 2022. Please signify your support by saying aye, Ms. Aller.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Four point one three, approval of regular school board meeting dates for 2022. State Code of Virginia, section twenty-two dot one dash seven-two reads, quote, "Each school board shall hold its annual organizational meeting for the purpose of establishing its regular meeting schedule for the ensuing year." End quote. May I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the regular school board meeting dates for 2022 as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Aller, would you take the vote, please?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.[1788.98]
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo. Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And I also wanted to add that Ms. Hummel has volunteered to serve on the WJCC Schools Foundation again, and we really do appreciate your representation on that board. So thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to serve. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, in the past, Ms. Cook has been gracious enough to serve on the PTA Committee and she's been doing that willingly and but I want to propose that maybe this board talk about rotating that responsibility.
Yes, ma'am. Is there somebody that, go ahead.
Well, yeah, so I have done that sort of not out of, because I've, having served as President of the PTA Council for several years, felt like the school board should be represented there. It's something that I would love another member or actually I think two members can go to every meeting. And it's never been official, but I think it would be great if someone sort of took it on and and included other members on a rotating basis. I would love to you know, have someone else do that. That would be awesome.
Yeah, she needs more free time.
Ms. Cook, if we, in a moment, I'll ask if we have a volunteer, if we didn't have a volunteer. Am I hearing that you'd be willing to continue? Yes, ma'am? No?
I would love someone else to do that. That would be great.
We'd need a volunteer. We need a volunteer. Would any, do we have a volunteer? Was that you, Ms. Young?
No, I'm volunteering all of us.
Okay. Do we have a volunteer or maybe we could?
It's like a good role for the Vice Chair, actually.
I mean, Mr. Chair, can we discuss it a little bit? Because I mean, I personally think that that is a responsibility that all of us could share. I mean, if it would mean, how often do they meet, Ms. Cook?
They meet monthly and Dr. Heron or her member of her team is there. I think it's the third Monday of the month at seven. Is that right?
And I believe so.
Yeah.
I think it does change on occasion. It's not always the same time.
Yeah, it's my observation that it's better if someone takes responsibility for it. And I think the same thing about sort of making sure that people attend the V SBA Regional Meetings so that we're represented there from.
Take responsibility for it. Are you suggesting that we don't rotate exposure? That it's not shared amongst board members?
I think it's fine to be shared. It's just that someone is making sure that who's on first, who's on second, that kind of thing, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Ordigo.
I did not, I couldn't hear what Committee, Ms. Young, was talking about initially.
This is the Parent Teacher Association we're discussing? And how long have you been on that committee, Ms. Cook?
You know, I just have gone informally for years. I don't know, Dr. Heron, years, right?
Yeah, it's not a formal committee of the board. It's just something that Ms. Cook has been representing and answering questions about what what is happening in the board at that time, I guess.
Is that the, is it the PTA Council? That's right, okay.
Did you say each person could take a different month or it has to be the same?
Well, so two of us can go, right? And so
Without it being a meeting.
Correct.
Yeah. Without being a public meeting.
We're looking for someone to go with Ms. Cook to the PTA meetings.
Ms. Cook would like to retire from PTA. Ms. Cook would like to retire from PTA and we're now discussing, you know, who might go in her stead. One or two board members might go in her stead.
Well, I think the Vice Chair could share that with Ms. Cook.
Thank you. Dr. Beers? Thank you, Dr. Beers. And Ms. Young is volunteering her time?
Well, if one of us needs to take the job, I mean, I would like to alleviate some of, you know, she's getting ready to leave the school board at the end of this year and she needs to have practice for
Is that official?
Free time. No, it's not official, but.
Well, now it is.
I mean, if she decides to stay, that's wonderful. She should never leave, in my opinion. However, I mean, in order to share this responsibility, if we had one person who would take the job on and then the rest of us could come as a participant.
I think I heard Dr. Beers say that he would be that one as our Vice Chair. And we don't necessarily need to.
Will be the other volunteer.
No, she's not going to be the other volunteer.
We don't have to have a second tonight, but that's something that we could, we, Dr. Beers, you could readdress as you attend the meetings.
I really I mean, I interact, we all interact with different members at different times, but I think it would be helpful to go to their meetings.
So thank you for taking the torch on that.
And if we have two.
Yeah.
Then we can, you know, we can trade off, but at least they would get to know who those two are. So sure, I'd be one of them.
Thank you for taking the torch and we'll check back with you as you progress with that committee and we'll see just how dire it is that we have to. Okay, so thank you. Thank you, Ms. Young. We're going to move on to item 5.01, Announcements and Superintendent's Report. Dr. Heron?
Mr. Chair, and Happy New Year, everyone. This evening, I wanted to provide a brief update on our return to school yesterday. Overall, we had a great first day, albeit a shorter one, and we were excited to welcome students and staff back to school. The increase in COVID-19 cases over the last two weeks, both locally and across the Commonwealth, is really concerning. Through this afternoon, we received reports of thirty-three staff members and ninety-one student cases of recent COVID-positive tests. We are continuing to implement the use of existing layered mitigation strategies to keep our school community safe. This includes keeping our current quarantine guidelines and requirement of masks. Two vital mitigation strategies at this moment in time. We are also using screening testing as a critical strategy to rapidly identify positive cases of COVID-19 and respond. If you've not already done so, we encourage students and staff to enroll in the Vista Screening Program. A link to register for the program is available on our website. The Vista Program provides free routine COVID-19 screening testing for students and staff. And the program will resume again on Thursday of this week. We encourage students and staff to avail themselves of this free opportunity as demands for tests through other sources remains high. We are also one of a small number of school divisions accepted as part of the state Test to Stay Program starting in January. More information about that will be coming soon. Yesterday, we had a significant number of staff absences due to COVID-19. I want to thank all of those who helped us ensure we had all classrooms covered. Both school staff helped and the cadre of over forty central office staff who were deployed to schools to help. This is really a whole team effort and I'm really proud of what everyone is doing to keep in-person instruction going. Moving forward, we'll continue to monitor absenteeism, substitute availability, school clinics, and every aspect of operations to make school happen for our students. Our goal with all of these strategies is to stem the spread of COVID-19 in our school community and to keep our schools open for in-person learning. If we all do our part to stay safe and healthy, we can keep our schools open. Thank you so much for your continued support and partnership. That's all for this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any board member comments or announcements? Saying none, we'll move on to item 6.01, Public Comment. Mr. Vice Chair?
It is at this point of our meeting when citizens can address the board. These citizens desire, those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. They're asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names on the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It's the Board's, it is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Therefore, citizens are asked not to engage in applauding verbal or verse, outverse, or any other type of demonstration during the presentation. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and three seconds to make their presentation and the Board asks that you respect this time limit. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
And who is our first?
And our very first speaker is Anne Marie Smith.
Good evening. Happy New Year. I think I'm the only one. And welcome to all the new board members as well. This is a portion of my email that was submitted to the Board in October. It's with urgency that I submit that the School Board immediately move all work sessions and public meetings to the JCC Building F Boardroom. Thus far, citizens and constituents have been met with resistance to requests for in-person public comment for anyone who is unmasked at the current meeting facilities. It's my contention that the JCC Building F Boardroom can safely accommodate the Board's meeting needs and best serve all constituents who wish to make in-person public comment with or without masks as established in the points below. The School Board website notes that this government complex, Building F, is presumed is a viable location to meet. JCC has a counting masking policy that accommodates all citizens' persuasion of safety risk with regards to COVID. This policy allows for citizens' discretion with regards to masking and thus permits all who wish the opportunity to address the Board or observe them in person. For evidence, this is met with cooperation and civility. You can review the recorded JCC Planning Commission meetings. Both the JCC Board of Supervisors and the JCC Planning Commission make use of the JCC Board F Boardroom without incident. It's unclear what COVID guidelines prohibit the School Board from using this boardroom. The seven-member JCC Planning Commission Board uses the room for similar purposes to the School Board, which is also a seven-member board. Distancing is easily achieved and the county has accommodated additional microphones, loose tables, et cetera, as needed for the Planning Commission. Side tables or work surfaces with microphones are situated to the left and right of the dais, similar to the Striker Building, for superintendent seating and other staffing. Can I finish my two sentences?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Comparing the Planning Commission meeting with the School Board meeting, I'll cut it short. I contend citizens of the same county are unfairly denied rights and options at the School Board meeting that are extended to attendees of the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. And this very Board met with Boards of the Supervisors at the Rec Center. This is a mask optional facility where this option was exercised at the meeting. So I'd ask for you to vote tonight to please relocate all future meetings and do the right thing. Thank you so much. Thank you for the extra time.
I believe that was our one and only speaker. Thank you, Dr. Beers. Move on to item 7 dot 01, Review V SBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members. Is this a Dr. Heron item or is this mine? Okay, all right. So clearly, this is something that we I'm sorry.
Totally forgot.
Okay. We handle each year, we review the V SBA Code of Conduct and one of the major reasons we do is because we buy into the V SBA and they provide us with counsel and guidance on policies and best practices. So we do desire to be as as well-aligned with their code of conduct for board members as we can be, so we can be in a good standing with the V SBA while also understanding that we're an autonomous school board. And so we represent WJCC, Leesburg James C. County. You should see that in that Code of Conduct here and I think we're going to get a final document that we'll all, after we've reviewed it, we'll be able to sign one single document. Ms. Aller? Yeah, great. Do we have any questions or comments on?
This hasn't changed.
Hasn't changed, no ma'am. All right. Any questions from our newest members? Okay, all right. Move on to 7 dot 02, Review Purchase Requests of Classroom Projectors and Teacher Control Panels. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This purchase item was actually approved in the end of your spending plan and is coming to the Board for formal approval now before moving forward. And Mr. Landers is hopefully on Zoom right now to present this item.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. This agenda item is to ask for your consideration of and approval at the next meeting of purchasing additional classroom projectors and teacher control panels. The Division Instructional Technology Standard for each classroom includes a ceiling-mounted projector and teacher control panel. Many of our projectors are using the older home-based technology and our teacher control panels have begun to reach the end of useful life. Phase one of this upgrade project was approved by the Board this past spring and consisted of three hundred and twenty-five classrooms. This purchase will allow the Division to continue with phase two and upgrade an additional two hundred and sixty-three classrooms to the current laser projector standard as well as the teacher control panel. As a result, we will have no projectors in the Division older than three years. The total purchase amount for two hundred and sixty-three projectors and control panels is seven hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. This price includes extended warranty and installation services for both the projectors and control panels. The year-end spending plan for fiscal year twenty-one allocates funds to support this purchase. The purchase will be made using the Division Contract Number 21 dash 15019 with Optech. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Landers. Any questions for Mr. Landers? And so this comes to us because the purchase request is in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no questions, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Landers. Thank you for your time this evening. Item 7.03, Review Amendment of the Fiscal Year Twenty-Two Child Nutrition Services Budget to six million three hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Yu is going to address this item this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. This agenda item is to amend our child nutrition services budget to reflect additional federal revenue that we anticipate receiving due to an increase in student participation as well as a decrease in local sales due to a decline in à la carte sales. The funds will be allocated on the expenditure side to cover the increased cost for food and paper supplies due to supply chain issues and shortages. The original adopted fiscal year twenty-two budget is four million eight hundred eighty thousand six hundred. With this amendment, it will update our fiscal year twenty-two budget to six million three hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-four. Be happy, happy to answer any questions that you may have. And Ms. Haley is also available via Zoom this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Any questions from the Board? Ms. Ordigo and then Ms. Young?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Yeah, I just, I, because I'm new again, that seems, it just struck me when I was reviewing the agenda that that is a fairly large adjustment. I don't know if that's typical. Obviously, I'm aware of the fact that that everything is very expensive right now, especially food and supplies. And it seems that it's largely being offset. Is that by federal money that's being, that's covering that or?
Yes, ma'am. We, Ms. Haley can correct me if I'm incorrect, but our reimbursement rate currently for meals is higher due to the pandemic, so that's why we're getting increased federal money right now.
I'm sorry, I'm having, it's just harder for me to hear. Can you just repeat that?
Sure. Our federal reimbursement rate right now is higher for meals that we serve due to the pandemic. So this is not, this is an unusual situation, but yes, it is federal money that is going to cover those increased costs.
Okay, and is this at all have to do with the fact that we're, that we're providing meals to all the students regardless of need?
Ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Young?
My question was answered. I was worried, wondering how that was being offset, but I understood it was federal funding.
Ms. Hummel?
This is just a general question because so, so the food is now being offered to everyone free of cost. Is, is that expected to continue next year or it, does it have like a sunset?
I'm going to ask Ms. Haley if she could address that question for us.
Um, I'm trying. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I apologize. Apparently, my video is not going to work, but at this point, USDA has not given us any indication as to what they plan to do. any indication as to what they plan to do for next year. So at this point, we know that it goes through the end of June, but we have no answer as to what will happen for next school year.
Okay, and then the capital outlay replacement, what, what's that 200,000 for?
We have a great deal or quite a few pieces of equipment that need to be replaced that are not functioning, that are very old. And so we are going to replace some of those before the end of the school year. Particularly, quite a few of them are dish machines and with lacking, with staff members replacing those dish machines will help us right now.
And, and so in reality, this is revenue neutral for us this year, correct? Or expenditure neutral for us? Overage is going to be covered by, by our other funds, by the government funds, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is just a wise use of, of making sure we're covering and, and the extra money that we're receiving and documenting a use for it, correct?
Permission to apply it a certain way so that it balances out in the end.
Correct. Thank you. Good wise, wise fiscal management, Mrs. Haley. Thank you.
And just for the, the benefit of new members, this fund is separate from our operating budget and is, is a totally separate account where money comes in and money goes out. It's self-supporting.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Young?
Yes. Ms. Haley, I have a question. Most of the meals that are being served currently are being served in disposable paper products. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I mean, you're talking about replacing dish machines. Is that because of food preparation? I'm trying to understand where the dishes are coming from.
It is because of food preparation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ordago?
Yes, ma'am.
Just have a, a general question. If this isn't the, the time for that, then that's, that's fine. Are we finding, obviously, the, the food for all the kids is being covered by the federal grant, and I get that. But are we finding that the food is being consumed by most of the children? Is it being taken advantage of or is there a lot of waste?
Ms. Haley?
We are find, we are finding that the participation has increased and it continues to increase as we go along, even more and more students are participating.
Thank you.
All right. I think this is the one that we'll definitely be able to support at our next meeting. And in fact, this and item 71 and 702, perhaps we can consider placing those on a consent agenda for next meeting. But we can, we can look at that as, as we press through with the proposed agenda items. Thank you, Ms. Haley and Ms. Ewing. Item 7.04, Review Award of Contracts for RFP 21-15335 English Language Arts Adaptive Online Program and Literacy Interventions Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ford is on Zoom tonight to present this, the consideration of this purchase. Ms. Ford?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Heron. This evening, I am presenting the request for proposals for the K-12 Adaptive English Language Arts Resources. W J C C has conducted a request for proposals to identify Tier One and Tier Three Adaptive Online English Language Arts Programs and Literacy Intervention Resources for grades kindergarten through 12. This RFP is designed to identify Tier One and Tier Three Adaptive Online English Language Arts Programs that align with our students' instructional needs and include an explicit systematic approach that is proven to accelerate the growth of students by providing intensive targeted instruction in foundational literacy skills, including writing, vocabulary fluency, grammar, comprehension, and skilled reading. Tier One programs must be designed to meet the reading and/or writing skill needs of all students, including general education students, special education students, and multilingual learners. The online program will be used on a regular basis throughout the school year to engage students in guided practice, independent practice, and assessment of growth. Tier Three Literacy Intervention Programs must provide comprehensive, research-based instruction in the five essential components of reading for students. The adaptive online programs should be specifically designed for students who are struggling readers, performing substantially below grade level expectations in reading and/or have reading disabilities. The programs should be inclusive of a platform that allows students to independently engage in online practice and provide the appropriate materials necessary for teachers to facilitate direct instruction. Members of the RFP Committee included representatives of the Curriculum and Instruction, Student Services, and Instructional Technology Departments. The proposals were evaluated on the following criteria: vendor qualifications, demonstrated understanding of the statement of needs and an ability to meet the RFP requirements, functionality of software and curriculum resources, a proposed work plan that demonstrates the firm's ability to provide supporting professional development and cost. The RFP was written with the intent of awarding one contract to multiple vendors, providing W J C C with the flexibility to enter into annual agreements for resources that support all learners. The projected cost for these programs over six years exceeds $100,000. This time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just so I understand this, that this is really a placeholder item? Is that correct, Dr. Heron?
It's for your review tonight and approval at the next meeting.
So at the next meeting, we'll learn more about exactly what this product does, how much it costs and.
Would we get, would we get a round dollar figure that might affect the?
Yeah, so like who, who the vendor is, what the contract price is all.
Absolutely.
Okay, so this is really.
But we won't get a round dollar figure that might affect, or am I missing something?
Yeah, it comes to the board for approval because it's, it's over 100,000 over a six-year period. Ms. Ford, you were going to give some clarification?
Yes, ma'am. So the contract that we have awarded is to multiple vendors, which will allow us the flexibility to evaluate our students' needs on an annual basis and enter into agreements with different vendors from year to year based on those who are prepared to meet our students' needs. An excellent example is with our Tier Three program. For that program, we, the number of students who would qualify for those instructional resources could vary from year to year. So our special education team, who would be deploying the use of that program for the students for whom it is most appropriate, would evaluate caseloads and identify the number of students and the students from year to year. So the cost could vary based on the number of students who would be enrolled in the programs that are selected.
So I guess what I'm struggling with here is, unless I'm missing something? Like I see that it's over 100,000, but I don't see what it's like. And I guess it eventually folds into our budget, so it would eventually be reflected in there. But I guess it would be, I, I guess it would be helpful for me to understand. I don't want to limit you on a not to exceed amount, but I don't even, I have no idea if this is 101,000 dollars or half a million. I just don't know. And so, am I, I would just, I guess, like to understand what we're being asked.
We could certainly provide examples of the cost of some programs that we are currently using in a similar fashion.
And it sounds like.
You could have a sense of an annual cost.
It sounds like the cost floats. It, it sounds like it's floating cost, and by the way, Amplify, IXL, Lexia Learning, and Voyager, they're not bidding on one contract. They're all part of one contract. Am I hearing that right?
Not at all.
That, that is correct.
Ms. Ordago?
As, as their products change, as our students' needs change, we have the flexibility under this award to select different programs from year to year as we evaluate how the programs meet our students' needs.
Six-year contract, and I think it might be helpful to know what a not to exceed would be within a year, understanding that over six years, it's, it's going to be exceeding 100,000, Ms. Ordago?
Yeah, I just, point of clarification for myself. Is this, is this English Language Arts for English speaker, English-speaking children, or is this for non-English speaking children?
These are programs that would be used with all of our students. One of the features that we were very focused on as we were looking at the different vendors and the different products was the ability to provide support for students and families in their home language. These, the Tier One programs would be used with all students, and our Tier Three, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What was your question, Ms. Ordago?
Oh, I said, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand. So it would be English Language Arts instruction, but in a foreign language? For students that don't speak English?
No, ma'am. It just provides additional support for students and families to understand instructions or activities and additional supplementary resources that might be available to students and their families. But it is to address the standards of the student's grade level.
Okay.
I'll come to you, Ms. Hummel. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I guess I have a, I have a couple of questions. Is this a, is this a continuation of what you've been doing here for the last few years?
Yes, sir. Last year, we used in our K-2 classrooms across the division, we used a product called Amplify, which is one of the vendors that was awarded under this current RFP. And that was used with all of our K-2 students. We're looking for a product at, for Tier One Elementary that could be used with all students, K-5. But it was used to supplement the instruction our students were receiving in their classrooms from their classroom teachers based on their grade level standards. And it provided additional practice. So it was a very purposeful way for our students to engage in targeted instruction during their independent learning time. So it did not replace their whole group instruction with their classroom teacher, nor their small group instruction with either their classroom teacher or their interventionist. It was a supplementary program. To meet each student's needs.
Can I assume then that this is not, all, all students are not going to be required to participate in those, especially those who don't need this intervention? Is that true?
Well, if you're one tool.
Or, or, or all of those, all students in those grades going to be going through this program?
All students will have access to the program. The Tier One tools that were selected were selected partially because they allow each student to engage in a diagnostic exercise, which identifies a student's strengths and their next learning opportunities. And then the program designs an individual learning path for that student based on their literacy strengths and needs. So it is not a one-size-fits-all program where all students receive the same instruction and practice opportunities as computer-adapted to their needs. And in doing so, it pauses when students reach an, an item of difficulty and provides resources for teachers so that teachers can supplement that instructional need the student's demonstrating. And it also allows for regularly occurring progress monitoring of students.
Okay.
But it is a computer-adaptive tool so that every student's needs are being met based on their individual learning.
I, I guess I'm, I am familiar with this program. So the other question I have is, I, I think one of the issues, and I think it's very important in the primary grades, is that whatever program or curriculum you incorporate, that, that it has to have significant interaction, literacy activities that students engage in. And I'm, I'm, I'm always a little leery of online programs where a, a child is going through a program, but he, he or she is not really going through something in an, in an, in an, in an interactive fashion. Is it possible then, maybe the way to look at this, as, as you mentioned, it's more supplemental rather than a primary source of the curriculum?
It is not a primary instructional tool at all. It is truly a supplementary, supplementary instructional aid that again is designed to be used for a fraction of a child's independent learning time. That time when they're not engaged in whole group instruction with their teacher while their teacher is delivering small group instruction to another group of students. Students engage in a variety of activities, writing, reading from their, their book boxes in the classroom library, engaging in other collaborative, cooperative learning activities. But this tool would allow our students to, again, spend that fraction of their independent learning time during the week focused on some practice that is specifically targeted to their individual strengths and needs.
Okay, and, and who will monitor the online activity that the student engages in?
The programs are designed so that the teachers have dashboards for their class so that they can monitor each student's progress through their, their individual learning path. It signals to the teachers as students are acquiring their skills and strengthening those skills in order to move on to the next leg of their learning path. It also signals teachers when students may, again, have reached a point where they need additional instruction in a one-to-one setting, or maybe they have a few other classmates who are demonstrating a, a similar need. And so the teacher could provide that supplementary instruction so that the student is in fact, you know, having a meaningful experience when they're interacting with the program.
Okay.
But the teachers will have a dashboard so they can monitor their students on a daily, a weekly basis. And the programs have built-in progress monitoring so that teachers can also not only monitor students' individual progress within their specific learning path, but they can see their overall progress over time, you know, from week to week or from month to month.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to hear Ms. Hummel, and then Ms. Cook, and Ms. Young?
Thanks. So when I, when I look at this, it, it looks like it's a mechanism basically to allow flexibility for your ability to go between these different vendors and work out what you need, when you need it, et cetera. And that's all, all great. My only concern is the same one that I think Ms. Cook brought up, is, is that it, it's above a 100,000 with no cap. And for my kind of fiduciary responsibility as a board member, it worries me when there's no upper cap. And I'm trying to remember, I'm just like throwing this out to the board. I remember Mr. Kelly talking about some other version of this with another, but I'm trying to remember what. Okay, so, um, what, I'll just throw it over.
Ms. Cook has some information.
Yeah. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So while we are listening to this, it occurred to me, so I think, Dr. Heron, if this is, my memory is correct, this is part of your overall effort to consolidate contracts and make them longer over time so that they don't all have to come to the board. And so the ones that are coming to my mind are the ones that have been with Hershey's and Pepsi. And so those make more sense to me because they're like widgets, like Pepsi, it's bottles of water. Or with Hershey, it's the little frozen fruit things. And so they're commodities that you're buying. It makes sense to me. This, because I'm not as familiar with the content, is harder for me to conceptualize. I know you're not going to buy 200,000 dollar bottles of, I mean, 200,000 bottles of water when you only need 20, you know, so. So that's why I think I'm struggling with this? Does that, is that?
I think we, what we probably can do, and Ms. Ford can help with, with this as well, is we can outlay potentially what will be purchased for the next school year and the number of students who will have access to those programs and give you an example of an annual cost accessing some of these programs, what we use already and what we possibly would use in the future. And that might help solidify what this looks like actually on the ground. In prior years, we would have had separate programs. We would have something that wouldn't have come. Um, in, in prior years, we would have had separate programs. We would have, uh, something that wouldn't have come to the board. It would have been under one hundred thousand. Um, in most recent years, anything that over a period of time goes over a hundred thousand, we now bring to the board. So it's, it's an, it's an unusual thing and it's something we've had to do over the last couple of years with, with several different contracts. Um, so I'll, I'll work with, uh, Mr. Walker and Ms. Ford and myself. We'll work to bring some greater understanding before you actually vote on it.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Ms. Young?
Yes, um, I'm trying to, um, understand this also. We're, we're currently using some of the, the products that are from these companies. Is that correct?
That's correct. We use some of these products already.
Okay, and then do, do we have any in, information about the number of students that are accessing these programs that are currently using them?
We can certainly provide that as well.
Because I mean, from what I'm hearing, uh, Ms. Ford say that this, this is a supplemental program. It's not the actual instruction.
That's correct. It's when we thought, think of small group instruction, uh, students move around to different activities, learning activities within a classroom. And, and some of these programs are used in that setting.
Right, and so I guess, uh, is this a program that teachers assign, uh, certain stu, certain students to use?
Um, I believe so, but I'll let Ms. Ford get into the details of that.
Again, our tier one program would be designed so that all students would have access to that tool as an, as an independent learning activity throughout the week during their English Language Arts instructional block. Um, the students at the beginning of the year would engage in a diagnostic exercise with the program. So the program would design an, an individual learning path for that student that would allow the student to practice a variety of those foundational literacy skills during that independent time. And over the course of time, that the computer adaptive program would, um, you know, move from one set of skills to another based on the student's need, based on their demonstrated strengths through that built-in progress monitoring aspect of the program. And teachers could, through their dashboards, monitor their students' progress and intervene if needed. But it is, um, used to ensure that, um, in addition to the other very wonderful independent learning activities that our teachers plan for our students, that our students are also getting some very specific skill practice based on their individual needs. So it, it allows for a great deal of individualization of a portion of that independent learning time our students are engaged in when they're not with their teachers and direct instruction. But it certainly does not replace the direct instruction that their teachers deliver.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm concerned I might have, um, skipped over Ms. Hummel and Ms. Cook. Did you have additional comments or questions? Okay, okay.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
Any other questions from the board? I definitely think that we, we're looking forward to hearing more about this, uh, RFP and what it involves and, and, and the dollar amount, you know, uh, so, so we can know that we can fully support it. Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Thank you.
Move on to item seven dot zero five, review amendment to capital projects fund budget. Dr. Heron?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Ewing is gonna take us through some of the amendments that need to made, to be made to the capital improvement plan, uh, due to additional funds being added.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Um, this agenda item is to amend our CIP budget to reflect additional funding that has been appropriated by the localities for projects as well as a grant that we have received. The amounts include the following: two hundred and twenty-one thousand for the Jamestown cafeteria design and one million three hundred fifty thousand for the Clairebird Baker dehumidification, both of which were approved by the localities as part of our fiscal year twenty-one year-end spending plan. Two million two hundred fourteen thousand five hundred seventy-five for the Berkeley H-back project that was a grant awarded to us through the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. And finally, three million one hundred thousand twenty dollars for pre-case space design that was approved by the localities in December. In total, the additional funding amounts to six million eight hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred ninety-five, which would bring our total CIP budget for fiscal year twenty-two to fifteen million two hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred ninety-five. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'll open it to the board first. I'd just like to say, uh, hearing our funding partners from the city and the county, they're, uh, often, um, reminding the public as well as us, uh, the, the school board, that they are, um, vigilant supporters of our community schools. And I think this really shows that, and that they were willing to move, uh, some projects up this year so that we can take care of some, some, uh, much-needed, um, projects. And so I just wanna say thank you to our funding partners for recognizing the need and for really supporting our community schools. Before we move on, any other comments from the board? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. We'll move on to, uh, item eight point zero one, revised policy DA management of funds. If I can ask Ms. Hummel to.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Dr. Heron, go ahead.
I believe this is Ms. Ewing again. This is Ms. Ewing's night tonight, which is why she's here in person. Uh, and so the one policy coming forward this time is, is from the finance side. So I don't know if you want Mrs. Hummel to do it.
No, no, we had seen it, but please, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, this agenda item is to revise policy DA management of funds, which was last revised in twenty eighteen. The proposed change to the policy would allow the superintendent or superintendents designate to make transfers up to twenty-five thousand between categories with monthly reporting to the board of such transfers as referenced in lines eighteen through twenty-one. Currently, the policy limits the ability for schools and departments to make transfers between categories or functional areas, such as from supplies, which is an instruction function, to software, which is under the technology function, or postage, which is under the operations function, for example. This change would allow principals and department leaders more flexibility to manage their budgets. Board approval would still be required for any transfers over one hundred thousand within a category. And board approval would be required for any transfers over twenty-five thousand between categories. Legal and cross-references have also been updated. And our attorney has reviewed as well as the policy committee and recommend approval of the policy as presented. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board on this? Ms. Cook?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, could you clarify the difference of transfers between functional areas and categories, just so that that makes sense for the question?
So categories and functional area are kinda used interchangeably.
Okay, so, okay, so they're the same thing?
They're the same thing, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, our other, can you, did you do any research? Uh, so I support this. I just wanna say that. I just, I'm asking questions sort of for the public's, um, interest. So are there other school divisions that have similar policies and, um, did you, are you aware of that or?
I did do some research. Um, several divisions have no limit on their transfers within categories. Um, there are a few that have, there are two that have the hundred thousand dollar limit within a category like we have. Um, for the between categories section, there are, there's one that has the twenty-five thousand dollar limit like we're proposing. And there's one that goes up to two hundred fifty thousand. And there's others that have a hundred thousand.
So this would be within the realm of normal?
Yes, ma'am.
This would be a fairly conservative approach.
Right, okay, thank you. Um, and then when you, um, when these transfers happen, um, uh, and will they be, and they're reported as part of the monthly finance report? Will they have a separate appendix in the back or like how will, can you, um, how?
It will just, I'll just add a separate report of transfers, um, to the report. And if there are none to report for that month, then we'll just list that there are none to report.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, thanks. Um, just so I can have a, a sense for myself, um, how often are these transfers necessary? Is this something that, that staff are running into all the time or is this just a couple times a year?
Uh, it's hard to say. I mean, we get contacted by schools and departments that, you know, need to move funds from one category to another. And I have to remind them that we have to take it to the board and it's a two-meeting process to get it through and get it approved. So we look for other ways to help them if it's something that's a need for them.
So this, these requests come from individual schools?
From schools and departments.
So for example, if you give the postage example?
Sure, I mean, within the finance budget, for example, most of our budget is under the administrative function. However, I budget for the postage for central office, which is under the operations function. And so when postage goes up and I don't know about it or we have additional mailings, then I can't transfer within my own budget without coming to the board. So I'll, you know, talk to Mr. Snipes over in operations and see if he has some funds in his area that I could move, as an example.
So this isn't, this wouldn't, it's a functional area. They're just within your budget. So it's not moving funds that would go from, uh, would go to one school to another school because a, a school or a principal asked for funds for a certain area?
No, ma'am. This would be within cost center. So within a cost center or a department, most centers and departments have different categories within their budget. Within a school budget, the majority of it is under instruction. But because of state reporting, we have to report certain expenditures under technology. So they have technology expenditures in their budgets and they can't transfer right now between those. So if, for example, like this year, a lot of schools are having to print more and buy more toner and it's reported under the technology function, um, but they can't transfer from supplies and they're seeing an increase in that because of, um, supply issues with copiers.
Okay, I'm just trying to wrap my own head around how it works, that's all.
I think it leads to greater efficiency within the system and meets the needs when they occur while still providing a way to report to the board on a monthly basis what we've done.
Any other questions or comments? Foreseen challenges? Okay. Uh, I, I appreciate a Ms. Cook's, uh, question. I was, uh, kind of along the same line wondering, uh, when this does happen, uh, if it's, if it's approved, uh, at our next meeting and, uh, it hits the monthly financial. I think it would be helpful for me at least, um, if you could, uh, uh, go a little further and show us where it was so that we can put our eyes on it in that monthly financial and we can, uh, get a little bit familiar to where that is found in that monthly financial. That's if this is approved. But I appreciate the oversight there. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, item nine dot zero one, approval of personnel actions. Can I have a motion to approve the personnel, personnel actions as presented during the personnel meeting?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as were presented in closed session tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Aller? Excuse me, is there any discussion? No, Ms. Aller.
Ms., excuse me. Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. I just don't wanna skip over anybody's opportunity to speak. All right. Um, item nine point zero two, approval of minutes from the December third, twenty twenty-one meeting. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes from the December, uh, third, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Any discussion there? Hearing none, Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. Nine point zero three, approval of minutes from the December seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting. May I have a motion?
I move.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Young and Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. Item ten point zero one, board member comments. If I could start with Ms. Cook.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to extend my, uh, congratulations and welcome to Ms. Hunley and Ms. Ordigo. I look forward to working with you both, uh, and I'm very grateful for your willingness to serve in this role. I know you'll both do great, great job. And then also wanted to congratulate Mr. Dowell and Dr. Beers and Ms. Hummel on your elections. Congratulations. I look forward to your leadership and, Ms. Hummel, I particularly look forward to your services parliamentarian. And in my view, you have the, are the best one we've ever had. So I, I hope you can up, uh, upstage yourself.
Oh, I hope not.
Thank you, that's all.
Ms. Young?
She took the words right out of my mouth. Um, but I did wanna welcome, uh, Mrs. Ordigo and Mrs. Hunley to the, to the school board. I'm looking forward to meeting with them. Um, and, uh, am, um, also congratulate our new leadership of our school board. I think that's what you just said, isn't it? Anyway, and I'm gonna wish, um, our, um, faculty and staff Happy New Year and, um, hope this is a little bit better year than we've had in the past too.
Ms. Hummel?
Um, I'm gonna say the same things to welcome Ms. Hunley and Ms. Ordigo and to congra, congratulate both you as chair and Jim Beers as vice chair. And I'm sure you guys are gonna do a great job. And then, uh, Ms. Young and I will gladly take up the, the challenge with the, uh, policy committee for some of the items that were brought up tonight. I, um, I did wanna acknowledge that we have received some, uh, communication from members of our community, some emails about, um, concerns, uh, with safety, I guess, uh, concerns for children coming back with the Omicron, uh, variation, uh, so strong right now. And, and some of them were mentioning, uh, recommendations about maybe perhaps, uh, offering masks to the, the K ninety-five masks or I, I just wondered, I'm throwing this out for, um, for Dr. Heron, uh, not to add any more work, uh, on your plate, but just that maybe at our next board meeting, we can discuss uh, what kind of safety measures that we are continuing to, to employ, uh, to make sure that the schools, uh, are operating as best they can in the environment that we have. I, I know it's always for, at the forefront of your mind from knowing you for the last two or three years working with the, the pandemic and just your deep concern about all of our students and the faculty and staff, their health, everything. And it's something that you are dealing with constantly. And, and I wanna say I have full faith in you and the senior administration and the decisions you're making. Uh, it, I think it would just be great if we can share some of those, um, protocols with, with the public the next meeting. Thank you, that's, that's it.
Ms. Ordigo, can I go to you?
Sure. Uh, I'm not muted, right? Okay. Um, well, I just wanna say, um, Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, it is a, an honor and a privilege to serve, um, on this board representing the citizens of the Jamestown District and, uh, James City County. Um, I take that responsibility very seriously and so I'm, I'm grateful to be here and I will, um, serve to the best of my ability. I know Mr. Kelly did a wonderful job for twelve years in this seat and, um, I definitely have big shoes to fill. Um, also wanna thank all of my fellow board members, um, as well as Dr. Heron and her staff. Everyone has been incredibly kind and welcoming and helpful and, um, several people have gone far out of their way to help me get up to speed, uh, most notably Ms. Cook, uh, Mr. Dowell. And I also wanna say thank you to Ms. Aller. She's, um, been incredibly helpful, accommodating, always cheerful. So, um, she's just been really wonderful and it's, as a brand-new person who really doesn't know the ropes, it's, she's been a great person to rely on. So, um, congratulations to leadership that was just elected tonight. Um, I look forward to working under your leadership and, um, hopefully I won't be on the computer screen next time. I look forward to sitting in the same room with all of you. So thank you.
Ms. Hunley?
Yes, Happy New Year to everyone and, uh, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity, the people in the pa- Yes, Happy New Year to everyone and uh thank you so much for giving me the opportunity, the people in the Powhatan district that voted. And um I I'm just honored to sit in this seat. And as Ms. Ordigo says, everybody on this board has been so welcoming. And has uh tried to really make things um understandable and easy um to manage. And um each board member that um that I've spoke with and ha- will have the opportunity to speak with, I thank you for your support. And um for the staff out there that had their rest day for today. Go to bed early tonight because tomorrow is a new day and I know you'll do well. And uh welcoming the students um back after the snow day. Thank you of, to everyone here and congratulations on everybody's new roles. And um I see twenty twenty-two being an awesome year. Thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank uh Mrs. Ewing and uh and the superintendent. For once again uh bringing us the uh really important information. Um as we uh begin to prepare a budget uh proposal for uh this uh for the next fiscal year. Um, um and I uh and and I very much appreciate the fact that. It it continues to be a challenge that, um but I think uh that. Um, the board is is very able um to uh to deal with those uh issues and challenges. As we begin to to work on on the budget and uh and I've I've I look forward to that. Um, I also look forward to attending uh those PTA council meetings. Uh, I think it is a good idea. I hadn't really thought about it. Um, I've met with individual PTA members and I met with some folks at uh some of the school count, school PTAs. But I think this is a, um it's it's a, it's a good way of of once again uh trying to connect with the um. With our families, with our, with our parents and our students. Um, the last thing I'd like to say is is that um I'm uh I'm I'm very help. Uh, I'm very happy and very respectful uh of all the board members. Uh, the our current board members and our new board members coming on. Um, I know that uh over time, we agree on things, we disagree on things. But um I I think I can uh demonstrate to all of you. That um I am worthy of your trust and I will do the very best job I can as the uh vice chair. Uh and look very much, and look very, and look forward very much to uh working with our new chair as well. That's all, thank you.
Again, welcome to our newest board members. Really looking forward to spending time with you apart from these board meetings and getting to know you. And uh understanding what uh why you answered the call the way you did and when you did. And there's there's going to be very specific reasons for why you did and and uh really looking forward to hearing that, hearing your stories. I want to say thank you to Dr. Beers for taking up this challenge. Uh, thank you, Ms. Cook, for uh being the standard bear for PTAC. For PTAC for so long. And uh Dr. Beers, thank you for taking up the challenge there. I was tempted. And I think that my wife probably would have had the locks changed. Top of God, if I took on something else. But anyway, thank you, Dr. Beers, and uh looking forward to hearing some reports from you on that committee. And uh again, we'll we'll check in with you and see how dire it is that a second person gets there with you. We had a speaker this evening, uh and I do thank you, Ms. Smith, for being here, uh cold as it is this evening. And uh your question was on uh the county location versus city location. I think we have an answer on that. Uh for our regular meetings, or do we not yet?
Oh, we do not yet.
We do not yet, okay, so we're still working on that. Um, and then the for WJCC, we had a question from Ms. Hummel. I think we we want to bring that back if we can for our next meeting.
Yeah, we're actually planning a presentation at the next meeting um with the, we thought we'd get back a few days. And then start to look at things and provide some updated information then, Mrs. Hummel. Yes, sir, thank you.
And as a part of that, I wonder if it would be possible to bring back at some point soon our medical advisory team that we do rely on. I don't know if that will be appropriate, but I think that that they provide a lot of great conversation to the table.
We've all already asked them to be present at the next meeting.
Great, thank you so much. Um, with that, let's move on to eleven dot zero one, upcoming events. Our century and career-ready advisory committee meets on January twelfth at three thirty in Newtown, Lakesy Hall. Uh, CAP will meet on January thirteenth at six thirty virtually. Policy committee will meet on January twenty, eight thirty AM virtually. Uh, and it looks like with the option of meeting at the annex, so you have both options. And then the student advisory committee will meet on January twenty-sixth at three at the Jamestown High School Media Center. Uh, upcoming meetings, we've got a budget work session on January eighteenth at four PM. Closed session on the same date at six PM, followed by the pre-budget public hearing at six thirty. Regular meeting after the hearing. February first, closed session uh here at the annex. And by the way, the the location for the budget work session through that regular meeting on the eighteenth is to be determined. And then work session and action items uh on the first of February, six thirty here at the annex. Uh, I would like to ask the board if we would be comfortable with adding proposed agenda items. Tonight, seven zero one, seven zero two, and seven zero three to a consent agenda? No?
Too much money.
Seven zero three, I'm I'm not hitting seven zero four yet. Seven zero three, you're saying no to?
I mean, I.
Okay, okay. Seven zero one, seven zero two, and we'll skip seven zero three, seven zero four?
Projectors are kind of a lot of money too, right? I just feel like when it's a lot of money, Mr. Chair, we shouldn't put it on the.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
We will hold it.
Yeah.
Yep, and then seven zero five to consent agenda. So it looks like seven zero one, seven zero two, and seven zero five?
So the capo.
Same, same.
Yeah, that's all a lot of money.
Same reason, okay.
Yeah.
Do we take issue with seven zero one or seven zero two?
So the projectors are a lot of money too, right?
Yeah, they are, two hundred thousand.
Yeah, and then, um, yeah, so. Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll add everything to the. To the, excuse me, action item, and we will have some good discussion. It'll be a good evening.
Long meetings.
It'll be a good meeting, alright.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm happy with it. With that, this meeting is adjourned.